All right, thank you. Chris has got one quick announcement to make.
Mr. President, members of the board and our attendees this evening, just wanted to make a note as you noticed Dr. Atha is not here this evening, our superintendent. Unfortunately, his father-in-law passed away last week, so he is attending the services today, so we just want to say our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife Mary and Dr. Atha and his family during these times. So, thank you.
Thank you. This part of the evening, we all look forward to celebrating Student of the Month. Before we begin, we have a few details about how this will proceed. David Dixon will be taking professional photos of each student as they receive their award. After all the students have been recognized, we're paused for a brief intermission during the time Students of the Month and their families are invited to the lobby for refreshments. Mr. Dixon will also be available in the lobby to capture photos of students and their families and school representatives. And now, we'll begin with the Virginia F. Wood Early Learning Center.
Good evening, everyone. I am Marcy Durato, the Director of the Early Learning Center, and I have some special people with me today. The most special person with me today is Emmett Williams. We also have Ms. Boland, Mrs. Bishop, and Ms. Petrush. And I'm going to talk about all the great things and the reason why Emmett is standing up here with us. So, our special thing this month was compassion, and we think that Emmett does such a fantastic job with this. Last year, in his classroom, a child joined the room about mid-year, and the child happened to be in a wheelchair. As a three-year-old or four-year-old, a lot of children are afraid of children in wheelchairs, but not Emmett. Emmett played with him all the time, went to centers with him all the time, and over the summer, they had some play dates. So, that's one example of compassion. This year, when Emmett's regular class is taking their rest time, he leaves the room and goes into another room and works and supports children there. In this room, there is a little girl who is non-verbal, also in a wheelchair, but she has a great sense of humor. So, Emmett sings to her, talks to her, holds her hand, walks with her in the hallway beside her wheelchair, and has become a really great friend and support for her. She laughs at him and tries to sing along with his songs, so he's done a great job supporting her. So, we chose Emmett because of his compassion. He has made a positive difference in several children's lives because of his willingness to help support other children. So, please join me in congratulating Emmett.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next up, Cary Ridge.
Hello, my name is Andy Hilton, and I'm the Principal at Cary Ridge Elementary, and this is Jen Rivera, our Assistant Principal, and it is our pleasure to introduce Richard Brown, who is our Student of the Month. Each month at Cary Ridge, we look at different lifelines like respect, or working hard, empathy, things like that, and this month, it was about respect, and Richard popped up to the top on who we should bring with us. So, here are a few things that some of the teachers that you work with said about you. Mrs. Foster, as teacher, said, "Richard is a kind student who cares for his friends. He is respectful to others in every setting. He works so hard with a smile on his face. He is such a joy to have in the classroom." Mrs. Coverdale, his STEM teacher, said, "Richard is a respectful child who is a joy to have in class. He works well with others, treats others with respect, and is eager to learn new things each day." Congratulations to Richard for this well-deserved recognition. And Mrs. McKinney, our counselor, said, "Congratulations, Richard. As Crass Student of the Month, I was not surprised when I saw Richard's name for exhibiting respect." Richard, he's respectful to his classmates and teachers. He sets a great example and model for other students to follow. Additionally, Richard always has a smile on his face and is welcoming to others, whether it is on the football field or in the classroom. Richard is a wonderful example of hard-working and respectful student. We are lucky to have him as a student at Cary Ridge. And there are some more, but I'm not going to read them all up here for time, but you will get them, okay? So, please help me welcome our thinker. Congratulate Richard. Wait, come here, buddy, Richard.
Congratulations. Next up, Maple Glen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Buzan, and I am the Principal at Maple Glen Elementary, and I am joined today by Mrs. Brenna Devitt. And we are very proud to introduce to you our Student of the Month, Mr. Alex Parks. So, Alex and his brother Axel are new to us this year at Maple Glen, but you would not know it by the way they walk down the hallways and how they greet everyone and how we greet them back because they have been absolutely delightful from day one. One of the things about Alex that we all like to talk about is his joy and his kindness. So, we've talked a lot about joy this year at Maple Glen, and that is what radiates from Alex. We feel so fortunate that we're able to have him with us at our Maple Glen family, and we talk a lot about leaf leaders, and so one of the things that we talk about is empathy, and that is the reason that Mrs. Devitt has picked Alex. And so, some of the things that she wrote about him, "He has the biggest heart. He comes to school every day with a huge smile and the warmest hugs. He's great at connecting with people and is inclusive of everyone around him. He's ready to immediately include and play with every single student he comes in contact with. He's a hard worker. He's excited about school. He's excited about what we're learning, and he's excited about the people around him. He's intentional about doing the right thing and treating people right. He is a natural leader in the way he models our school and our classroom procedures." And if you want an example of joy, it is Alex, and he spreads that joy to everyone he comes in contact with. So, Alex, we are so proud of you for being our Student of the Month.
Congratulations. Next up, Mona Ontrell.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jeremy Marvel. I'm the Principal at Mona Ontrell Elementary School, and I have a fourth-grade teacher, Ms. Kelly Rudin, with me. And we're here to celebrate Abida Sheikh as our Mona Ontrell Student of the Month. Abida is one of those well-self-proclaimed, very quiet students in class. I know she has a ton of friends because we talked a lot about that and had a lot of people share some amazing things about her, but in class, she's definitely all business. She says that she doesn't talk out unless she has a question, or she raises her hand to answer a question for Mrs. Rudin, and I can see that through and through because she is all business. Some friends said that she's very focused, works extremely hard, and one of my favorite things that a student who was with us up until third grade, and then she moved, and then she came back, she actually had Mrs. Rudin in first grade as well, and now she's back with Mrs. Rudin. She said, "Abida is very helpful and is always doing the right thing. She is the nicest kid. Abida was the first person to come to me when I returned to Mona Ontrell and asked me to be friends." And they did not know each other until that time, so Abida just seeked her out, knew she was a new student, and asked her to be friends, and that's just the kind of kid that she is. And I do want to share a little bit what Mrs. Rudin had to say about her. She nominated you, Abida, because you are very compassionate, is always willing to help others. She has a smile on her face every day. She pushes herself in academics to learn and grow in all areas, and she shows all of our rocks and all that she does every single day. So, if you could, please congratulate Abida as our Student of the Month.
Congratulations. Up next, Oak Trace.
Good evening. My name is Christy Herring, and I am the proud Assistant Principal at Oak Trace Elementary, and we are here to congratulate Alex for Student of the Month. I have Mrs. George here, his life skills teacher, and Ms. Rihanna in I.A. in the classroom. Alex, I have a couple of things to say about you. Lots of people had great things to say. Mrs. Graff said that she loves working with Alex every day, and he's a good listener, a classroom leader, and always displays an awesome sense of humor. Ms. Katie, the occupational therapist, said that he has grown so much this year. He's hard-working, friendly, and so caring towards others. Mrs. Hart, your teacher last year, said that you worked so hard and you achieved all of your goals last year, and she says that you love spooky things, so we share that in common. Mrs. Herring loves Halloween also. So, she said that you really like spooky things. Mrs. George, your classroom teacher this year, said that you have tremendous growth with following directions and attending specials with your gen ed peers. And Sam, your RBT, said that your journey has been remarkable and that you have grown leaps and bounds. There are so many things on this piece of paper that I want to share about Alex. I'll give it to you, but we just want to congratulate him for being our Student of the Month.
Congratulations. Up next, Shamrock Springs.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Parker. I am blessed to be the Assistant Principal my first year at Shamrock Springs. I have with me Ms. Izzy Harding, as well as her kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Medford. Izzy might just be beginning her journey with us at Shamrock Springs as a kindergartner, but I can already tell you that she is a true light to every single person that she sees and that comes in contact with her. If it's not the smile or the sense of style, because she is rocking, especially the jacket, customized, by the way, she truly is a face for everything that embodies the joy that we hope for all students in our building and in our community. But I have a couple of things that I want to say that Mrs. Medford gave as comments about Ms. Izzy and what she sees on a day-to-day in kindergarten. I would say Izzy is a kindergartner at Shamrock Springs. She has shown incredible growth and determination every single day. She comes to school with a bright smile and a heart full of courage, and over the past month, she has built amazing stamina, walking more, participating in class, continuing to work hard, and be a great friend. Even when she's tired, she keeps on going. Her perseverance, positive spirit, and growing independence inspires everyone around her, and we are so proud of all the progress that she makes every single day. If you would, please join me in congratulating Izzy as our Shamrock Springs Student of the Month.
Congratulations. Next, Washington Woods.
Good evening. My name is Libby Bond. I am the Principal at Washington Woods Elementary, and I am here this evening with Galilea and Ms. Kandiff, her teacher. Every month at Washington Woods, we recognize many leaders throughout our building and celebrate them all, but tonight, we get to celebrate Galilea as our Student of the Month for this event. We're very excited to have you. Ms. Kandiff shared that Galilea is our Student Leader of the Month. From the first day of school, she has demonstrated many of our seven habits. She comes in each day with a smile, gets started on her tasks, and has often observed helping other students in our classroom without being asked. She works very hard and helps to ensure our classmates are successful too. She models leadership daily in our class, and we are so proud of her. Way to go, Galilea. We are so proud of you. So, please congratulate Galilea tonight.
Congratulations. Westfield Washington Intermediate School is next.
Good evening. I'm Annette Patchett. I'm the proud Principal of Westfield Intermediate School, and I have with me Ms. Laura Melling. She is one of Claire's teachers. So, congratulations to Claire Engle-Dahl. She is our Student of the Month. This was easy. Claire is a sixth-grade student who has already made a big impression on the intermediate school, despite we've only been in school 22 days. She was chosen unanimously by her quad team of teachers. Claire stood out among her peers in all the best ways. When asked what she loves most about WIS, Claire didn't hesitate. "My teachers," she said with a smile. Funny enough, her teachers said exactly the same thing about her. Claire is every teacher's dream: friendly, kind, outgoing, full of initiative. She takes time to build meaningful relationships with both peers and staff, creating a positive and welcoming classroom environment for all. Her creativity and willingness to think outside the box bring energy and fresh ideas to every lesson in the classroom. Claire also shared today that she loves history and dreams of becoming a crime scene investigator one day. How cool is that? Pretty cool. Mrs. Phillips shared a sweet story that captures Claire's character perfectly. A classmate was hesitant to go join on an activity today. You know where this is going, don't you? Yeah. And Claire gently encouraged them. "It will be fun, and it will be more fun with you." To which, Mrs. Phillips added, "She is so cool. You're just a cool kid." We couldn't agree more. Congratulations, Claire. WIS is lucky to have you.
Congratulations. Next up, Westfield Middle School.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Swan, Principal at the middle school, and I have with me Mrs. Shepherd, and we're here to recognize Chatham Hauser as our Student of the Month from the middle school. And as Mrs. Patchett said, it's really hard to stand out in the first six weeks of school, especially in middle school, for positive reasons. And Chatham has done just that, and she's shown her compassion and empathy towards those around her. And I can only imagine that as a little child, you were very similar to Emmett, to what we heard about Emmett, so sharing that compassion with people who need it and want it. And so, we have stories of her welcoming new students, and so I'm going to share just a couple of things that her teachers have said about her. Mrs. Wolf says, "Chatham is a natural leader who consistently strives for excellence in everything she does. She is diligent about completing her work and always pushes herself to go above and beyond expectations. Chatham is always kind and respectful. She treats her classmates with care and is quick to offer help whenever someone needs it. Her positive attitude and strong work ethic make her an outstanding example of what it means to be a Pathfinder, and that's the team she's on, the Pathfinders." Another Pathfinder teacher, Mrs. Zappia, says, "Chatham is great. She always is in a good mood. She works hard and gets along well with her classmates. She's the first one to volunteer for everything. It doesn't matter what it is. She does it with enthusiasm and her best effort. She makes the class better just by being in it." And then finally, Mrs. Shepherd. I have the pleasure, you can read it for yourself.
I have the pleasure of ending my day with Chatham, seventh period, and we've already had a new student in our class. And before the new student even came, she asked me what her name was and said, "Put her by me," and I just thought that was amazing and inclusive, and it really just shows your character. And our theme of this month is connectedness and respect, and you really embody that. So, you're a pleasure to have in class, and I enjoy.
We all enjoy. We all enjoy having you as a Westfield Middle School student, and let's recognize Chatham for our Student of the Month.
Congratulations. Up next, Westfield High School.
My name is Erica Seymour, and I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Westfield High School. I have the honor of honoring Hannah Patterson today. It's kind of full circle. She came up to us through Oak Trace and has been in our system. And let me tell you about some of the amazing things that she has done and will do in her future. Hannah is involved in basically everything a person could be involved in while still being a student, taking rigorous courses and contributing and still sleeping. She is a member of Dance Marathon, DECA, ambassadors which support students who are new to WHS. She's on the Unified Football Team and a peer facilitator. She is in student government currently getting ready for homecoming, so we stole her away in her preparation for that. Thank you for being here. She's a senior mentor to our freshmen who are with us this year from the middle school, helping for them to learn the Westfield way and how to be contributors in our school. She's also in the Mayor's Youth Council. She does the morning announcements on the P.A. system, which is incredible, and she already has an internship at Therapy Redefined. She is hoping to go to either Bama or LSU. She is also going to be graduating on target for her Capstone Diploma via the Biomed pathway, and she wants to pursue a career as a pediatric occupational therapist. Let me tell you about some of the great things that her teacher said in snippet form. Hannah's a remarkable student, but even more impressive in her compassion and leadership. She is respected by her peers, who I have heard remark on her ability to do it all. She's a natural leader and compassionate human. I feel fortunate to have had the opportunity to get to know her and can't wait to see what she does for her AP Research Project. Hannah is incredibly hard-working, dedicated, and driven student. She gives 110% effort in all she does, and she does it with integrity, honesty, and kindness. And one more. This is from your intern supervisor, Jenny Cloud. "She is an amazing intern, a self-starter, and never has to be told to do something. The kids love interacting with her." So, congratulations. We are very excited to celebrate today and through the rest of your senior year. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all the September Students of the Month. At this time, students and their families are invited to the lobby for refreshments and photographies. We will resume the business portion of the meeting in 20 minutes. Thank you very much. We will resume the business portion of the meeting in 20 minutes. Thank you very much.
I feel like we're missing somebody. Is everybody here?
Is everybody here?
That's right. I know. It's just empty. Stacy, are you ready? All right, we'll start the meeting part of the school board. And do we have any comments or anything this evening? Not having any, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. The consent items include board minutes, accounts payable, payroll, personnel report and overnight and out-of-state field trips. All items in the consent agenda have been reviewed by the board in advance of the meeting and approved in a single motion. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? The motion is passed. Each month, we look forward to hearing updates from our construction partners on the progress of the projects across the district. We do have a few. This evening, we are pleased to welcome three of our construction managers who will be sharing updates on several destination Westfield projects currently underway. We will hear from Matt Grossman from Meyer-Naham first, please.
Sorry, appreciate the update or the opportunity to provide our update. So first, we'll be presenting on the Westfield Transportation Facility. Work completed to date, the gas line installation is complete with the meter installed at the building. Exterior metal panel installation has started and is ongoing. Exterior painting at the bus, excuse me, canopy has started. Site concrete continued around the building. The storage and racking system for all the new bus parts under the mezzanine has started. That is the picture at the top right that you can see there. And the bus washing equipment installation has started. Interior finishes have continued with the starting of the floor goods, carpet, and VCT in the facility. The contingency usage to date is right around 36%. That's just went up a little bit from the last update two months ago, so we are at 428,000 out of the 1.1 million to date. The items allocated to the contingency, there was a credit to delete the stair treads at the Area B mezzanine and then there were some adjustments to the access road for all the utility work going on. And you can see there, that's a picture from the southeast corner of the office portion of the transportation facility. The concrete sidewalks and flat work is all ongoing and then the curbs are in with the preparation for the asphalt coming up yet this fall. Transportation, the next 60 days, we will complete the electrical wire pull at the bus garage and the canopies, complete the interior finishes in Area A. Area B finishes will also be wrapped up. We will install the vehicle lift in the bus garage. The installation of the storm structure and piping that comes off the southwest corner of the bus lot that connects to the new drive over to the middle school will be installed. The installation of the balance of the asphalt paving and top coat will be installed this fall and installation of the perimeter fencing. You'll see there in the top right picture, that is the new bus wash equipment going in, the northern bay there of the garage. In the bottom right pictures, with all the MEP rough ends completed, they are putting in the dry fall paint, getting all the structure and exposed piping painted. Town Road and Citizens, the Westfield utility portion of the project, work completed to date. The final grading cleanup and the riprap installation at the pond and the two drainage ditch The final grading cleanup and the riprap installation at the pond and the two drainage ditches over near Little Eagle Creek have been completed. They're just top dressing that now and getting that ready for the final seed. The sanitary main has been installed from the existing structure near Little Eagle Creek all the way parallel across thirty-two and up the new town road to the transportation center. And we've actually started the extension towards the new middle school. Duke has completed a power line relocation along thirty-two. That is for the widening of the state road for the new intersection. Comcast and Frontier, who shared the poles with Duke, are scheduled to complete their relocation here in the next couple of weeks. And then the remaining poles will be cut down. The pre-construction meeting with NDOT was completed on August twenty-fifth. The water line pre-installation meeting, that kind of got covered up. I think originally said nine-eight was a tentative date for that. But we actually have a harder date now of nine-five for the pre-con meeting with Citizens and their inspector. So as soon as that happens, we'll be able to start the water line work. Grade has been cut for town road and stabilization has been completed. That is the picture you can see there in the bottom right. And then the new signal plans have been submitted to the city in NDOT for approval. There have been some adjustments there with the city as they look at the future extension of town road south of thirty-two. Just making sure when the intersection goes in, everything's coordinated and just has to be done once. So they're kind of looking ahead to the future of that. So alignments on the south side align with what we have going on on the north side. The town road contingency usage is currently six percent, so seventy-six thousand. The one point two million has been used to date. That usage came from the city of Westfield Stormwater Review comments for some modifications to the new pond to the east and the drainage ditches. And then a culvert was added in the northern existing ditch that field to allow the farmer access to his crops while we were building the road and utilities. Yes?
The water line meeting with Citizens?
Yes.
That was gonna be yesterday and now it's?
Yeah, it was.
It already happened last week then?
Yeah, when I set up the agenda, it was tentative for nine-eight. They were waiting on the rest materials to come in, the thirty-six inch pipe. So until all those came in, Citizens would not allow us to schedule the pre-con. So once all those materials hit the site, they were able to give us a confirmed date, which is now the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of September.
September, yes. You're welcome. The next sixty days for town road, we will start the water main installation and continue the storm across the road, getting those curbs and inlets installed. The rough cut of the road and soil stabilization will be wrapped up. We will install the stone base, install the concrete curbs and then prep for the asphalt installation. The completion of the easement and land acquisition in Eagle Town, I believe since the wrapping up of my agenda and getting that sent over, that has been wrapped up. Everything has been submitted to Citizens. So all that paperwork that the design team had been working on is complete. I mentioned the Duke power pole relocation, which is just really now down to Frontier and Comcast removing their cables and getting those buried. And then those poles will be removed from the side of the road. And then receive the NDOT and city approval for the intersection work to start. And that'll allow us to complete the widening of thirty-two on the north side and then install the traffic signal. The top right picture is the new box culvert that goes under the new town road with the drainage ditch heading and the riprap heading to the east towards Little Eagle Creek and the detention pond. And the bottom right picture is the overall view, which will be the, you can see in the left side is the corner of the pond from the middle school. So just to the right of that in the picture will be the town road extension and then all the dirt work. At the top of the picture in the ponds, you can see that is what we put in for the whole called the Centennial Complex, which will take the water from the middle school project and the transportation project. The Westfield Operations Building, which is the current transportation facility, work completed to date. Site demo for the new warehouse building was completed. The building pad was graded and stabilized. Concrete foundation installation has started. Water and electrical utility relocate have been completed. The contingency usage is currently zero for that project. The next sixty days, we will start the foundation block and the load bearing walls that will support the new mezzanine. The underslab plumbing and electrical rough ends will be complete. The load bearing walls I mentioned there will be going up. We will prep and pour the concrete slab on grade and then start the pre-engineer metal building, steel erection. The left picture is the building pad after stabilization with the stone getting placed. And then the right picture is one of the form works for the concrete foundations. Shamrock Station, work completed to date. Connection space was turned over for teacher and student use. Site asphalt landscaping was completed. Exterior painting was completed along with metal panels along the roof line. Interior finishes have been completed. The kitchen equipment installation is done and has been submitted to the State and Health Department. And the MEP systems have come online. The contingency usage on this one has always been heavy, just due to the existing building that had multiple renovations over the years and just all the buried unknown conditions. So to date, that contingency usage is at a hundred percent. Going back and taking a look at it, seventy-seven, roughly seventy-seven percent of that has been from three large ticket items. And those were the main electrical gear substitutions, some kitchen modifications. The existing sprinkler system that was to remain had to be fully demoed and replaced. And then there were multiple areas of the existing roof that were originally called to stay, had to be replaced as well as they were found to be leaking. The pictures that you can see there, the top right and bottom are areas there in the rocks connection portion on the south part of the building. The next sixty days, complete the remaining curtain wall and storefront installation. Complete the remaining metal panels, which are the round column wraps around the front of the building. And schedule the final inspection for the event space, kitchen, rock shop and the media house studio. And we actually have our punch list walkthrough scheduled tomorrow with the architect in Brian Kelly. The picture that you can see there that's just black and white is actually that in the room, that is the Rock South Studio. That is for their future green wall location. And then the right picture is a snapshot of the new full-service kitchen in there for the foodie group. And that wraps up the updates on our projects. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Looking good. Next, we invite Scott Wells from Garmin Construction.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this evening on the Midland and Shamrock Elementary Schools. Okay. We're gonna cover project progress tonight and then a look ahead on current activities and then the construction log. We'll start with Midland. So this is what the site looked like in the spring. As you can see, we are doing steel erection on areas E and F, right here on the bottom of the page. And then we're still doing the foundations there at the top. And then this is the east parking lot where we were working on the geothermal wells. So fast forward to July and then now September. In July, all of the steel erection was complete and we're started to work on the roof and then, oh. Okay. And then September, this picture was taken Friday of last week. All of the shingle roofs are complete. And as you can see, most of the exterior sheathing is done around the building. And we're still working on the exterior framing in the last education wing in our sequence, which is area A, which is this area right here. And then this is just another progress photo from September. This is from the south looking to the north. As you can see, in area E, which is back by the mechanical room and area F, which is the gymnasium, the brick is done on this side of the building. And then in area D, the brick is also done to this corner right here. So progress is, the site is progressing very, very well. The east parking lot has been graded and the light pole bases are in. And we will start the curbs on Thursday of this week. And then after that, obviously, the stone and then we'll be looking for binder for the site before the fall. There's currently not a roundabout. Okay. So just the progress, the ponds are excavated, ninety percent complete on all site utilities, which is water, storm and sanitary. The geothermal system is complete, flushed, pressure tested. The east parking lot is graded, all the drives are graded and we'll be starting binder this fall. And then looking ahead, we'll be finishing the utilities and then working on the brick throughout the fall. And then EFAS, which is the exterior insulation finish system, has started back in the mechanical room and gymnasium area. We have started the interior finish sequences in the education wings of D and B. So we have the interior framing done in D two and B two. And also the mechanical plumbing and electrical rough end overhead and in-wall is progressing. On the contingency, we started at one million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. We've used two hundred and twenty-seven thousand to date for a balance of one point seven. For Shamrock Springs. So same picture, this is March, spring of this year. Building pad is done and we are putting gravel on the building pad. In July, we were still working on the structural steel erection and detailing. And then September, you can see the structural steel is done, metal roof decks are on. And we've actually started the shingle roofing back in areas E and F. And if you can see around this corner of the building, we have started the brick. And then around this side of the site, we've started the exterior framing and exterior sheathing. Just another picture, this is from the south looking north. You could see the roof is on in the gymnasium and then we're just starting exterior brick on this corner of the gym. So for the progress, steel's complete, utilities are sixty-five percent complete. The geothermal wells have been drilled, the west side bus route is complete. And the slab-on-metal deck on the second floor, we are seventy percent complete. And then slab-on-grade is sixty-five percent complete. We are currently working on the light gauge metal trusses on the education wings. So looking ahead, obviously, our main goal here is to push as hard as we can to get this building dried in before the winter. That will include the roof, exterior framing and also light gauge framing as well. We'll continue to work on the interior and exterior masonry. And then finish our utilities and then our MEP underground and finish our slab pores. For contingency, we started out at one point nine million. We've used a hundred and ninety-seven thousand and for a balance of one point seven million. So any questions regarding Midland or Shamrock? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Chris will provide an update for Core Project.
Good evening, Board. I appreciate you all taking your time to listen to the presentation here. So really, this is the last one you will hear from me for a while. The ELC is turned over, being used. We've been wrapping up a few things here over the past month. The rugby and multipurpose fields are just completed and punched out as of last night, actually. They're out there using them today. That was a little bit of a slower process with the infill than we thought. So it took them a few extra days to get that, it's actually a coconut grain infill that goes in there. So it was taking a little bit longer for that stuff to settle down into the turf than we had expected. So, but it's awesome that they're done and being used. We're wrapping up this canopy concrete tomorrow morning. And the plan is that starting Monday of next week, the buses are gonna be using that side of the parking lot. We're gonna be able to utilize that entire thing as intended on a daily basis. So that's really good news. So this'll really be short and sweet. I have a few kind of updated photos. This one is a little stale. The last time we droned it was a few weeks back. But you can see here kind of the overall campus picture without the multipurpose fields being completed. Just another view here of what this new addition looks like with that interior playground and the new parking lot areas. Picture there of the canopy progress. As you can see, they'll be wrapping that up tomorrow. And then the main entry with the new overhang. I know this was a challenging piece with trying to connect to the existing building with some of the structural that was at that main entry. So that was really nice to get that completed and see it's functioning as intended. Here's some pictures of the fields here. You can see, I put that one on the right there, that's that coconut infill that they try to rake through. There's two different infills you can have, there's a rubber infill and this coconut infill. And that rubber infill is kind of those black little pellets that you'll see. Now this one's just a little bit different with that coconut and getting it down in. So if you all do walk out there, you will still see some of that. But as it settles and as it rains, that stuff will find its location and sit where it needs to sit. So just a little bit of a recap, we're wrapping up all of the punch items. There's currently about twelve miscellaneous items remaining. Some of them are like the front entry desk that was just actually getting installed tonight. We have a little bit of wrapping up to do there. We are sending weekly recap emails to Brian Kelly and Marcy, just kind of summarizing, this is how we're doing on the punch list. This is what's remaining, this is what we're targeting next week. So working through that. Rugby field's completed, canopy concrete complete tomorrow. The landscaper is working really from west to east through the entire property. So he was out there earlier today, hardly raking the entire site, getting it all graded really nice. And you'll start seeing plants start to go in this week and then next week you'll see trees and all that landscaping will start getting wrapped up. There's a planting window that we had to stick by, so we didn't want to get it in too early with all the hot temperatures. So now that planting window we are in. So you'll start seeing all that going in. A few things that are gonna be happening over some breaks. We have some wall protection panels that need to get installed. They were a long lead item we've been waiting on. So those are gonna come in and we'll install them over fall break at the end of the month. And some transition strips from LVT to carpet that need to get installed, that will happen at fall break. And then there's some toilet partitions that need to be reworked. There was a height issue where in order for, from a safety standpoint, the teachers need to be able to reach over from the top of the stalls to get a kid if something were to happen. So some of those were installed too high, so we need to replace those. So that is gonna happen during winter break. We're gonna get in and redo what we need to redo at that point. From a financial recap, I have listed here the original contract amount of two million nine hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty. The balance to remaining, which what we have remaining to bill, right about two point seven. And that includes contingencies, allowances, retainage, all of that. So you can see there, the contingencies, we were holding approximately three percent at the beginning of the project. Remaining is just under three hundred and ninety thousand. The design contingency was exhausted to zero. And then our allowances, there are miscellaneous allowances for winter conditions, soil stabilization, things like that. We were totaling at the beginning of the project two hundred and eighty thousand and the remaining balance is just under seventy. So those come back to the district, we did not use those monies. Along with that are some general conditions dollars and general requirements dollars that we did not use as well. So I'm happy to say that the project came in under budget, which is great. So I'm happy to say that the project came in under budget, which is great, and it was a successful project. I know Marcy's happy. We're working through a few HVAC challenges right now with just some balancing that needs to be done, but for the most part, I think Marcy is happy and Brian Kelly is happy with the communication and everything. So I appreciate you all. Thank you for allowing Core to be a part of the district and do this project. We look forward to being partners here in the future. So are there any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda for business and operations is the demographic service proposal, which Dr. Greg Hunt will present.
You, Mr. President, thank you. With the continued growth of the city of Westfield and the upcoming city build-out plan and census, it is imperative that Westfield, Washington schools have an updated demographics data study to inform long-range facility planning. The previous demographic study was completed in two thousand and twenty-three to ensure that the district is adequately prepared for future enrollment trends and facility needs, an updated demographic study is necessary. So if you look as part of your board packet, you will see the proposal. And in that proposal, and this is being done again by Dr. Jerry McKibben, is who has done the previous demographic studies for Westfield, Washington in the past. But the proposal includes a population forecast for years twenty-five, two thousand and thirty, and two thousand and thirty-five by age, sex, and total population for all attendance areas, including six elementary schools, one intermediate, one middle school, and one high school. The enrollment forecast by grade from twenty-six and twenty-seven and school years through thirty-five and thirty-six, and school year for all attendance areas, and a comprehensive report covering methodology assumptions, forecasts, results, and demographic profiles of all elementary areas. The cost and the timeline for this particular proposal, the cost of the demographic study of itself is eight thousand two hundred dollars. An optional presentation of the forecast results of the board and district leadership is available for an additional two, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and the project will be completed within six weeks of contracted approval and receipt of necessary enrollment data, including three previous years of enrollment by grade in each attendance area and the October two thousand and twenty-five ADM enrollment numbers, which obviously is coming up here very shortly. So by that time, he should have all the details and what's to thoroughly start his study and make sure that we have this information in a very timely fashion. And so the recommendation would be that the administration recommends that the Board of School Trustees approve the proposal for McKibben Demographic Research LLC for demographic services at a cost of eight thousand two hundred dollars, as well as the optional forecast presentation for the one thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar fee.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Beeding Demographic Research LLC as presented. It's been moved in second to approve the proposal. Is there any discussion, questions?
Just a quick question. Do we know that optional forecast presentation will have additional information that's not in the report? Like, in other words, they're just going to read a PowerPoint to us during that one?
That's a good question. That's a good question, or be able to answer questions. I mean, as far as a public format would be concerned, so that would be him to be able to be onsite and wish to do that as well.
Can we hold off on that additional one and see what the report has and see if we have any questions before we contract that second piece, that twelve fifty?
Sure. That could be a decision that could be made. I'm just offering, as far as the proposal is concerned, is that optional piece. So if the board were to pass it here this evening, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going forward with that, but it would be that we would be able to, if we deem it necessary, we'd be able to go ahead and move forward with that.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
Do we know what his accuracy rate has been? Because I'm sure we're not the only school that does this.
He's sought after by many school districts across, not only the state of Indiana, but across the country as well. So, and they, obviously, they seek him because of his expertise and obviously, no one can be one hundred percent accurate.
Correct.
But his forecasts have been pretty close, yes.
Thank you.
I just know when he's, when he's presented to us in the past, having done maybe two studies during my time on the board, he's been incredibly accurate to the grade level. And I also found a lot of value in his presentation because it wasn't just reading the PowerPoint, also just allowing us to ask questions and better understand some of the ways that he looks at the data. I've found it to be very valuable in the past, so I would encourage the administration to seek that out on his schedule before it gets booked up.
Yeah.
One thing as well, he has great historical, you know, value. He's been involved since I've been here for twenty years, every rebalancing, redistricting, he's been involved so that, you know, he has that historical information of our district and how it's changed over time, which I think is very important.
I think it's very important, too, is to get as accurate details you can, is forecasting out as far as the financials are concerned. And that is obviously a difficult thing to do at times. And so to have that, I'm speaking specifically from, again, a financial outlook and plan, it's really necessary to us to have as accurate detail as we possibly can have.
Right. All right, it's been approved and proposed. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are opposed, the motion is passed. The final item on the business and operations portion of the agenda is a resolution to authorize the process of purchasing real property. And once again, Dr. Hunt.
Thank you, again, Mr. President. Before you this evening, you will have basically a resolution to move forward with in as far as the acquisition of real property. Again, you'll see the theme in all of this, as far as growth is concerned, we talk about the demographic study and looking at where potentially going to be as far as enrollment's concerned. And with that being said, and as we look at growth, obviously, facilities are a need in a district that is growing. And so, and with a facility, obviously, you have to have property in which to continue that growth. And this evening, what you are going to be presented with and the recommendation to approve is actually the process in which to acquire property. And so, again, with the continued projected growth of Westfield, Washington, the district must proactively plan to accommodate future educational facilities. One critical component of that planning is the acquisition of real property in strategic locations that align with growth patterns and infrastructure development. To that end, the administration seeks school board approval to begin the formal process to purchase real property located on adjacent to twenty-six twelve East, one ninety-sixth Street, Westfield, Indiana. And I'm not going to read off all of the parcels that are associated with this piece of property, but they are there within the resolution for your review and for approval. In accordance with Indiana Code, purchase of real property by school corporation in excess of twenty-five thousand must follow specific legal procedures, including appointment of two qualified appraisers, receiving and evaluating appraisals within thirty days, ensuring any offer does not exceed fair market value, and board authorization by resolution. And so the resolution summary, as what is before you this evening, is point one, authorizes the appointment of the two independent appraisers, grants the administration authority to evaluate appraisals and to make an offer within legal parameters, delegates authority to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, controller, or treasurer to coordinate and execute necessary actions with designated legal, financial, and real estate representatives, and ratifies all actions already taken toward the objective and complies with, again, applicable provisions under Indiana Code twenty-five dash thirty-four point one, thirty-five, thirty dash five dash five dash two through thirty dash five dash five dash one eight. As a fiscal note, obviously, at this particular point, there is nothing that has been determined as far as that financial ramification is concerned. So at this time, the administration recommends that the school board of trustees approve the attached resolution authorizing the superintendent and designated representatives to proceed with the legally required steps for purchasing real property on or adjacent to twenty-six twelve East, one ninety-sixth Street, Westfield, Indiana, including appraisals and potential offer submission.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two five dash fourteen, authorizing the process of purchasing real property as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve Resolution twenty-two five fourteen, authorizing the process of purchasing real property. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are opposed, the motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the curriculum portion of the agenda, return to Dr. Hoover for approval of the revised twenty-six, twenty-two seven school calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to bring to you, we now have the official dates for the live golf tournament set in two thousand and twenty-six. Those dates were moved back a week later than we, this year, so August twenty-one to twenty-three. And so due to that, we have some adjustments that need to be made to our school calendar. The current calendar designates August thirteenth and fourteenth as district closed days, and so we do have four recommendations that we would like to make to you. The first one being that we would keep the first student day on August eighteenth. We would actually shift the district closed day from Friday, August fourteenth, to a week later, Friday, August twenty-first. Designate the thirteenth and the fourteenth as teacher workdays, and then move the start of new educator academy, which is what we do with our, all of our new educators before the school year starts, move that from the sixth, August sixth, to August tenth. So if you look at the proposed calendar, in addition to the current, you can sort of see those changes where ultimately, we're moving out of the week of the third through the seventh, starting on the week of the tenth. And then the biggest change is, the impact of these changes will be that our student days will decrease by one, from one seventy-seven to one seventy-six, still one more than the current one seventy-five. Our teacher workday and PD days before the first student day will increase from three to four. So normally, like this year, we have three teacher workdays, typically one of those being a, we call kind of a district-minded day, so like a PD-type day, one of those being a building-level day or a school day, where our principals usually hold their staff meetings and other type of meetings, and then the release, and then one day or any time after those being teacher work time. And in this new proposal, there would actually be an additional day of teacher work time on the seventeenth, that'd be a teacher workday. And I think if you talk to any of our teachers, they would tell you that an additional day before school is never a bad thing, because, and especially with this year coming up and having some transitions through some buildings, this could be a great benefit to them as well. But then keeping that student day still on the eighteenth, and the day off would be on the twenty-first, so that standard three-day student week and teacher week that we've had in years past would remain, it would just be Tuesday through Thursday instead of Wednesday through Friday. And then the only other major change would be our new educator orientation would be moved back to the tenth, but instead of doing two full, or three full days, we would actually do that in two. And in the last couple of years, we've actually made that day three a day at their building with their principal and mentors, and so really, the change would just be, we would be moving that, taking a day off of that. So, but those are the changes that we will be recommending to the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar for your approval.
Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the revised twenty-two six, twenty-two seven school calendar as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the revised twenty-two six, twenty-two seven school calendar. Any questions? So on the workdays, means that we're going to be opening up, I think, a new building and readjusting things, that'd give teachers more days to do what they need to, to get their classrooms ready and everything else?
Yeah, so the, so the plan for twenty-six, twenty-seven is that Midland Crossing would be, will be opening, so our teachers would know this well in advance, so we'll have this as soon as our rebalancing meetings are over, then the next step will be Dr. Baldwin will be working with staff members to declare kind of what their plans are for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. But we would anticipate that Midland Crossing will be opening and then Shamrock Springs, the new Shamrock Springs, I know as of right now, will probably be opening, maybe not at the beginning of school, but shortly thereafter, and so, but still, just for those. And then even within that, there's going to be other teachers, of course, our fifth grade teachers all moving down from our intermediate schools, so that'll all be new. And then there'll be some internal transfers just because of the way our, we anticipate that the numbers may play out, there could be teachers that switch grade levels or switch schools, and so an extra day is going to be, quite honestly, great for everybody involved, as well as our building leaders who may want to have an additional staff, just sort of welcoming day and giving them a chance to get to know their new staff members.
All right. Very good. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are opposed, the motion is passed. Thank you, Dr. Hoover. I'll now ask the board members and superintendent to share success stories from the past month. My condolences and as the whole board and everybody up here go out there, Dr. Atha and his family with the loss of his father-in-law. Anybody else?
I'd just like to say, and some of the teachers are here in attendance, it's, you know, been at school, you know, for a while now since our board meeting in August, but just want to say thanks to all of them for a great start to the school year.
Yes, and thank you for showing up, because I know a lot of times, everybody disappears, you know, at the break and everything else, so it's nice to see faces out in the crowd. So thank you. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.